Hello there and welcome into another edition of the J Mac Podcast, this time in formed Utah, as we seek to connect you with candidates lawmakers and influencers in the state of Utah. To help you better understand the issues of the day. Today, we spoke with Lori Stringham, she is a candidate for Salt Lake County Council at large. Also joining us was political consultant Abby Evans. And we had a very interesting discussion about the issues that face Salt Lake County, such as infrastructure, water usage, Black Lives Matter, COVID-19, education. So I can't wait to bring this information to you. Also, a great discussion about mental health in an age of COVID for both our children and ourselves. So here is that interview. Well, Lori, why don't we just start off by asking the most basic question? Why on earth would you want to be a Salt Lake County Council member? And go through the process of an election and all of those things? What, what is your motivation here?
To be honest, my motivation is kind of an interesting. I kind of got talked into it, we'll start there. I have been going to the Salt Lake County Council meetings for quite a number of years now. And I have found that over the years, I get frustrated because there's things that need to be fixed or changed. And it's very difficult to do things from the outside. And so when the the position came open this last year, I had a number of people talk to me about it. And I kept telling them, no, I'm good where I'm at, I enjoy what I'm doing. And finally, a very close friend of mine sat me down and just said, you need to really consider this. How many years have you been coming? How many years have you tried to fix things, change things? And to know a bell, and this is your opportunity to fix it from the inside. I think you need to run. And so as we talked about it and I considered it, I realized, you know, he kind of is right. There's some things that need to be fixed and changed at Salt Lake County. And I've done everything I can from the outside, it's time to do something from the inside.
So what are one of those things from the, from the inside that you want to fix? What's the biggest thing that comes to your mind?
Budget. Everybody has a budget, everybody needs to live by a budget. And we need to keep our budget expenses within check. And so when we're dealing with large budgets like Salt Lake County, we especially have to be careful of how those budgets work. And because of that, we need to make sure that we are not raising them for just no reason. And how we're spending the money that we raise have to go to things that are vital and necessary. Because Salt Lake County is not what it used to be. We're not doing services for as many people as we used to. We're not even the same setup or form of government. And last year, they enacted a 7.8% increase in property taxes, and that was a problem. We fought it, they originally asked for 8.5% and ended up at 7.8%. Now, none of us got a 7.8% increase in our pay, our budgets, or anything like that last year. And maybe a few people who did were very grateful for that. But now that COVID's hit, there are some serious problems with budgets. And we're going to really have to look at how we spend those budgets, how we set those budgets, and where that money is actually going.
So what was that 7.8% supposed to, to do? What were they, what was the intention of the council and the mayor to raise it so much?
Well, part of their explanation was they hadn't raised taxes in a long time, that they were getting behind on some of their infrastructure, that they were getting behind on some of their needs. But when you look at the county government and where the budget has grown, they haven't been as cautious about what they're building, how they're spending, and how they're monitoring those funds over the years. And then certain departments-
So it's more like a patch?
Yes. So in reality, there are some things that they really need to seriously look at. The, the mayor's office has grown exponentially since Ben McAdams took office. And then Jenny, Jenny Wilson took office. And because of that, Jenny Wilson has grown her staff even larger. And that's what most people don't understand. When she took office, she mentioned to everybody that, hey, I went from four deputy directors down to three. And unfortunately, she let the one that we worked with very closely and was very useful to the townships go. And she kept ones that although are very helpful, you know, not the ones we worked with and not the ones that are easy to work with and were very helpful to us. So in that process, we realized that we had a few concerns. The first one was that her staff seemed to keep growing. And when I started researching it, we realized that she had all these assistant deputy mayors. And that one of her deputy mayors makes over $250,000 a year in salary benefits. And so that was a concern because government shouldn't make people millionaires. I mean, that's really what we're coming down to. It's in four years, that person will have made a million dollars off of Salt Lake County taxpayers. And so, and they've been with the county for quite a few years. And so when we started looking at all of the budgets and then asking questions on how can she have more than one deputy mayor? Because state law only allows for a deputy mayor. And because of that, I started looking a lot closer to everything else. And we realized that her assistant deputy mayors are not even allowed by state law. So how did she do that? So when we started researching it, we found out she did it by executive order, same way Ben McAdams did it. And so through that executive order, she was able to create not only three deputy mayors, but three assistant deputy mayors. And then on top of that, she was able to then change the county code to state that all deputy mayors and all assistant deputy mayors are deputy mayors according to state law. So according to that change, she has six deputy mayors, not three.
Wow, and she's supposed to have one?
Yes. And everybody's had one up until Ben McAdams.
There you go.
All right, so obviously budget's a big deal. Let's get into some of the, the issues that are facing all of us right now. COVID-19 is a huge issue and we're seeing record numbers now in the state of Utah. It seemed like at first we were doing really well and we were driving the numbers down. And it appears to me that since we send our kids back to school about that time, we started going through the roof and there's really no end in sight. We see the ICUs are, are starting to talk about potentially rationing care. How does the Salt Lake County participate in this? What do you see their role and what would you like to see being done differently? Or I guess what would you change?
Okay, so COVID is a really important thing. And we got to remember, and I think we have a short-term memory when it comes to COVID. When we were talking in March about closures and things, back then, in April and May, they were already concerned about a huge spike in the fall. Cause that's the trend that the flu takes. And so we knew that we would be facing a huge spike right now. So this isn't a surprise to anybody except those who want to act like they're surprised. It's been on our list of things that we knew was going to happen. We knew that school would be back in session. We knew that we would have to do some very huge changes to be able to make sure that those things happened in a very appropriate manner and that we were very careful and safe. Now, being a teacher, we've, we talked a ton about that clear back in the fall as well as now. And what I'm finding out right now, as I've been talking to a lot of our parents, our students, and people that are concerned is that we're not seeing what we need to be seeing right now. What we should be seeing is communication on how to stay healthy and safe, how to improve our immune systems. We're not seeing any of that. And because of that, what we are seeing is mask mandates, we are seeing fear tactics, we are seeing a lot of things coming out. And we're seeing people keeping things shut down. We already knew this was going to happen. We just need to address very specific and important things. Right now, we need to just go with the latest scientific information that we have and understand that it's going to change as we go. Because we're learning about COVID as we research it. And as a teacher, we know that that's going to change as we get more and more information. And as the scientific process takes place. So what's interesting to me is we, we need to expect that what we're doing now and what we might do next week and what we might do a month from now might change as we learn more and more about COVID. So right now, we're using specific tactics to protect people and protect ourselves and protect our schools and protect our students. But what we're not addressing, and I guess this gets to what I think we need to be changing and what the Health Department needs to be focusing on right now. Masks, we're not sure how well they help. We've got a lot of diverse information on that. But regardless of how they help or not, if we're going to mandate people to work, we need to be able to protect them. And with the current research, they're telling us to wear masks. On top of that, we have a whole nother aspect that we haven't really talked about. And that is mental health. And ultimately, the crisis that's going to come out of COVID right now is not going to be the disease itself. It's not going to be all of the business and the economic impacts, although that's going to be a big thing that's coming out of this. But the biggest impact is going to be mental health and wellness of people who are dealing and living under COVID right now. And especially our youth. And we are not talking about what we need to do to protect them, what we need to do to keep ourselves healthy, what we need to do to be able to keep our family safe. Instead, we're talking about wear masks and don't go anywhere. And that isn't going to solve our problem. We need to actually start talking about how do we keep our bodies and ourselves healthy? How do we keep our children healthy and active? Telling people not to get out, telling people not to be in the outdoors, which is what we did at first, was a huge, serious problem. We need to be outside, we need to be moving, we need to be in the air, we need to be dealing with the depression and the community traumatic, I mean, this is a shared traumatic event is really what this is. It's very similar to nine 11, but it has, and it will change the way we see things. And our youth are not going to be the same. They're not going to think the same, they're not going to be around and have the same thought process that we had because their world just changed overnight. And depending on their age and how they process it, it's going to change how they are able to think through it and work through it and their mental state in the future. And we need to be able to help families, parents, teachers, community leaders to know how to address that aspect of it. Because if we don't get on top of that now, that will be the greatest crime coming out of COVID right now.
Yeah, I do agree with that. There has been almost no discussion of mental health issues. We spoke with State Representative Eric Hutchins last week and he said the same thing. He said, they're expecting this wave of mental illness issues. We've seen suicides go up, we've seen alcohol use go up. We know doctors are being inundated with anxiety prescriptions and medications. And really, I don't see anybody on a state or local level or on a federal level talking about the mental health aspect. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
There is a group who is talking about it, if people are listening, and that is your Parks and Recreation Association and groups. We are very concerned about that. We are looking at ways to bring programs and we are looking at, in fact, one of the best programs we have for mental health right now is a Parks RX program, which doctors can write a prescription to get people into the outdoors and into the parks, especially for mental health. For those who have chronic illnesses like diabetes and heart disease and all sorts of things like that. Getting outdoors, we know help combat, helps to combat mental illness. Being physically active helps to combat that. It also helps with family social illnesses that we're dealing with right now. The pressure of being in a family in COVID right now is unbelievable. And that is one way prescribing outdoor play for families is one way that can lower that part of our social ills that we're facing out of COVID right now as well. And that is a program that we have just brought into what we're doing as a community. It's one that we partnered with Salt Lake County on. And so they are taking the lead role in that with their Health Department. And University of Utah has been involved in that. And Kerns Lurker Park, actually, we held a summit to get that started and going to get people educated on it. And we have some beta test groups that have been working with this now. And we would love to see that not only grow, but also become something that every doctor can do from here forward. And that is write prescriptions for people to get outside, get active, get mobile. And we're hoping to expand that so you can write prescriptions to get people active and into our community rec centers and into the places that they need to be to be able to help them with their mental and physical health and social health.
So at the rec center, what are you guys doing to make sure you're not spreading? I mean, is it social distancing, masks, disinfectant? How do you encourage people to come and be social without being social?
Actually, all of the above, and we are still doing a lot of our programs and our things Facebook Live so that you can get on and watch and do it from home if you're in a high-risk category. We are also trying to do things to help encourage people to walk outdoors and check back in and let us know that they did it. We are looking at ways of extending invitations to the community to go out and check on your neighbors. We did a lot of that in the very beginning, we need to continue to do that because there's a lot of people who are isolated. In Kerns alone, we're an aging community. And what we're finding out really quickly is that our, our elders in the community are being isolated. And they're afraid to leave and they're afraid to go out and they have needs not being met because of that.
And so- When I was, I was out canvassing with Eric Hutchings, I noticed a lot of older folks had signs that said, you know, we're quarantining, please respect our isolation, you know, don't, basically, don't come in our house because they're scared, they're worried about getting it.
So what we've been suggesting is that you knock, you back up 15, 20 feet and you just communicate them and visit. Having a mental break, having somebody to talk to that isn't in your own household is huge, huge with mental illness. And they will talk to you as long as you let them, even on phone calls, they'll talk to you as long as you will let them. Because they're isolated and isolation is one of the worst things we can do to anybody.
After being at home throughout March and April, and then the weather got warm enough to go ride my bike, I was going up and down the Jordan Parkway, just enjoying seeing other humans out, being humans, doing human things. It was great. I was just, no offense to my household, but I was ready for new humans.
See, I'm, I'm an introvert, I'm just the opposite. I've been loving the pandemic, having to wear a mask so I can hide in public. I was built for this time, but not everybody else is.
I had a terrible like cold sore, and so the mask was awesome because no one had to see my ugly face.
There are benefits.
There's benefits, yeah.
I will tell you, my biggest concern as a teacher though is I have a hard enough time learning my students' names. It takes me an entire quarter to get most of their names down. And by the time I had their names down at the semester, I had this terrible realization though this year that I was going to be stuck next year having the same kids. And if they show up without masks, I will have no idea who they are.
Maybe everybody needs to write their name on their mask.
Well, the problem is, I don't know what they look like under those masks.
No.
Looking at, asking them, so I can go onto my website and that we have from Granite School District and pull up pictures. But the pictures are from last year and they, a lot of them have changed hairstyles, hair colors, shorter, longer hair. Some of my students have changed names. And so it's been really interesting to kind of try to picture who they look like now under that mask to what they look like. You know, what they looked like last year or what they currently look like. So I'm, I think a lot of us are going to find if we only know people or we only meet people with masks on and we never see them without, that we're going to have some surprising things coming out when we realize what they actually look like. Cause I think our face, when we start looking at people this way and then we realize that there's more to it, we will recognize eyes more and hair color more. But when we see the rest of their face, we're going to go, oh, I didn't have you pictured that way.
Well, and just learning to, just learning to communicate with non-verbal cues. I mean, it's, you know, I've, I've realized that like my mouth, I hold my mouth differently when people can't see it. I've seen people on TikTok talk about how they realize they always have their mouth open now when they're in public because they're breathing through the mask. And they, they worry about having to reset back when the pandemic is gone. So there's all those interesting side, kind of side effects.
Yeah, but when I'm at the grocery store and someone's taking up way too much time, that hurry up impatient scowl of mine just does not translate that well if you can only see this much. So it's very ineffective.
As a teacher, I can't give them that look anymore. They don't see it, you know? And so I have to have that voice now. The other thing that-
Ah, the voice, yes.
The other thing that's been really interesting is I had an odd situation this past year where I had some palsy in my face. And because of that, I noticed that my, I hold my mouth really weird when I talk now. And it's not as bad as it used to be, but it's something that I'm aware of now. And so with a mask, nobody sees that, so that's been nice.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it's just amazing, all the things that we're having to learn from COVID. And I think you're right, our children are going to be very different. I do want to move on to some other, other topics that are important. As, as I was running for Congress in, in the primary, I had an opportunity to sit down with every single mayor in the fourth district. And every one of them, the first words out of their mouth were infrastructure. They're so worried about traffic. And it's interesting, you have the people in the far west that are talking about major arteries coming out to their areas. But then you had the other cities that are close to I-15. And their, their complaint was, we're, we're the, the through route. And nobody's sending us any funds. And so everybody's coming through our neighborhoods and, and the money's all going out to the west. So how do you see infrastructure? What is, what is your role and what is your plan?
So Salt Lake County actually has a huge role in this, and I think they've actually let some of that role go. They haven't done what they probably should have done all the way along. And one of those things that they did was they should have been meeting regularly and they should have an infrastructure plan that includes all the cities. Not just some of them, not just certain ones. And it needs to be something that we're all on the same page on. And I know they've done a little bit that over the years, but it wasn't enough. And we didn't get ahead of the infrastructure. There's no reason why we couldn't have planned larger open spaces between housing developments, understanding that this is going to be a main artery going west. Because we knew where the main arteries were going to go. We knew where the developments were going to totally end up being. We knew which is our main sections. So how did we miss planning an east-west freeway? I mean, that makes absolutely no sense because we knew all of the growth was going west. But we didn't do anything about it. And we left it to somebody down the road to deal with instead of dealing with now. And it was a lack of planning all the way along. And what I'm finding right now is we had a huge battle this last year. Olympia Hills is a very good example. You have a development going in when there's absolutely no infrastructure to support it, no infrastructure that is going to help them mitigate some of the problems that the county is responsible for. They instead push it off and those who will have to deal with it are the cities and communities that live around it. Well, that's poor planning. The infrastructure and the way we've always done planning and zoning, both in Salt Lake County, as well as, as in any of the local cities, is we look at our current infrastructure and what it can sustain. We look at how quickly the plan is to develop that. And if it's not ready, we don't put the development in. So what we're lacking right now is the fact that we're not ready. We shouldn't be putting the development in. We should be focusing instead on getting the infrastructure in place so that we can do some mass building. We can do some things because the housing crisis is very severe right now. The problem is, we're now putting things in where we can't support it infrastructure-wise. And that isn't going to help the housing crisis. That isn't going to help people getting west and east. That isn't going to help anybody on the west side, and it's not going to help anybody on the east side either. So we're in a position now where we let things go for too long. And now we're having to play not just catch up, but we knew our growth was going to be exponential. I mean, there was a study 25 years ago that told us exactly what the growth was going to be right now. And we're not only hitting those numbers, but we're exceeding them in certain areas of the county.
Yeah, they, it's a great point. The other issue that the mayor's brought up in line with infrastructure was water. And all of this, all of this new construction and, you know, we, we have drought years here and we rely so heavily on the snowpack. And, and this river that is divided up between us and Southern California and even Mexico. So what are your thoughts about, about water and the growth that's going on?
Water is a serious issue. And it's, it's kind of interesting because the Parks and Rec District I belong to and have been involved with for 21 years now, it'll be 22 in December. We are part of the Utah Association of Special Districts. And I've been very involved in that group for quite a number of years. Because of that, one of the big groups that are part of that are water districts. And all different kinds of water districts and sewer districts and fire districts and all of that. I have learned over the years, a lot of their issues. And I will tell you right now, we have two big issues with water. Number one, we don't have the amount that we need to sustain growth in Utah if it keeps getting siphoned off elsewhere. We know that, which is why the Colorado River projects and some of the things that are happening, we've had to take some really strong stances about, no, we're not going to share. We also have two other issues. A lot of our water supply on the west side is contaminated, it can't be used. So you can't just dig a well and get additional water. So we need to do some cleanup so that we have water available on the west side. And the other thing that we're not doing that we could take a huge advantage of, but we have no infrastructure for, and we should be doing more with is secondary water. We don't allow people to use secondary water. It's actually illegal to use secondary water. And yet, why, why can't we find a way to create a source? And in all of our new developments, especially on the west side where water is so tight and short and we don't have the ability to pull as much? Why don't we use secondary water for, on our properties and outside where it's not going to get into our culinary water? So we need a better plan to develop the secondary water resources, how to clean up what we currently have available and then also be able to protect what we have coming in. And all of those things are things that we can look at, but we should have already had those plans in place. Secondary water, since we're just barely talking about, it should be something we already had, have rights to and a way to use and a way to incorporate into our current water plans.
So something I find living in Salt Lake County is not only with growth do we get more numbers, but we also get more diversity, which is something I really like about Salt Lake County. But then that, you know, that brings in a big question about the Black Lives Matter movement that hit recently and the different protests and the discussion people have been having. How have you been involved with that? And how do you see the county being involved with it?
Well, let's start with how have I been involved with it? I had an interesting and unique opportunity. Black Lives Matter was holding an event here in Kerns. And just so you know, it's not like they're brand new, they've been around for a long time. They've been active, involved, they've held events in the past. They've been up the state legislature lobbying, the Utah group especially. And they've been doing their best to educate people on their concerns and they have valid concerns.
And they did a good job up on the hill, they did.
Yes, they do. So when all of this started happening and we started having the Black Lives Matter protests and then they became more riots and protests, there was a lot of fear in communities. And we had just seen several of these riots and protests that turned violent. And then I got word that they were looking at holding a Black Lives Matter event in Kerns. And that when our county mayor, I guess, I guess they went to a whole bunch of different groups, to be honest. And all of the cities told them, no, you can't come here, we don't want you. We don't want to hold your event here. And so they contacted the Kerns mayor and our Kerns mayor said, what kind of event is it? And they told us it was an event for children. And it was a protest slash event. But they wanted to do it peaceful and they wanted to invite people out to hear the stories and to share their own stories.
It's more like an awareness event, I would say.
It was, very much so. And there wasn't a march that was part of it. It was just located in, on one of our soccer fields that Salt Lake County owns and out in Kerns. But the concern came in is of course, several people had gotten involved in some communications in the very beginning. And because of that, they failed to recognize the, the importance of this for our community. Because we are so diverse out in Kerns. We have so many different languages spoken, so many different, different types of communities in our community. And so we realized that this is going to be a good thing as long as we took a good role and helped and did what we could to make sure it was safe. And so the Kerns mayor said, absolutely, welcome, we would love to have you. And then a few other people who weren't so happy about it decided to get involved. And that's-
There's always those people, aren't there?
Yeah. So I, I got a call one day saying, I need you to mediate. And so I was, I was really surprised. And I was, I was called in to- And I was, I was called in to help calm some waters because some people got upset. The event organizers were not happy. And so I just said, okay. And I sat down and I met with them and I, we talked and we were able to work things through and we were able to. Come to a solutions and, and we were able to get involved. And the fun thing about that was we helped the event. I brought my kids. We passed out popsicles at the event. We got involved in helping and. You know, it, it was interesting when we arrived because people were like, why are you here initially? And I said, oh, we're here to help. And like, oh, okay, great. You know, and I think there's some fear too. We saw that fear during the event when some people. Showed up and they weren't sure if they were there to join the event or make trouble. Because there's fear on both sides and that's what I learned really quickly. The other thing that came very apparent during this time was that they all have a story. I didn't ask them, hey, what's the political reason you got involved? I said, hey, tell me about your story. Tell me about your personal reason for getting involved. Why is this so important to you? And oh my gosh, I mean, their stories are wide and varied and very valid. And I can understand why they would be involved in an organization, a movement like this. And what people don't understand is they were around before it became this riot. Like that. And so we had a wonderful fit pool event. It was very successful. We had a lot of people involved in it. They had some great groups coming in, some wonderful performances that night and we had a great time. And
People often, people often watch the news and they think all of a sudden this is some. Just popped up event or some popped up issue that just magically appeared out of nowhere. But no, this has been building for a long time. This isn't something that just occurs and political phenomenon usually builds on itself until it hits a breaking point. And then you have movement, then you have action, then you have people jumping in because they have these stories and these experiences. It's not just this, this random thing, you know, Rosa Parks just didn't decide to, you know, stay in the front of the bus. I mean, this has been building up for a while. You know, so same with Black Lives Matter. It's not this brand new, oh, we just decided to do this thing, you know? It's been building up for a long time.
Well, and what people don't also realize is they've got a lot of people who feel like they're in the same position. They are drawing from other groups. There are a lot of Latino groups that have got involved out in Kearns and then in our west, west side area. There are a lot of LGBTQ community members who are now involved in this organization on the west side area because they all have similar stories.
They all have They get to that with women too. Like, me too could have been a piece of this, you know?
And there are some Me Too movement members who are a part of this.
Yeah, I'm saying they, they can find common ground.
But here's the thing that I think everybody needs to understand. There's common ground among all of these. And I had a conversation with Lex Scott not that long ago. She is the head of the Utah Black Lives Matter and she told me, she goes, we're not about. Going after police. Because when we talked, I mentioned that I have two brother-in-laws who are police officers. And they've got an interesting story among them. One is a first generation immigrant here in the United States. And the other one has two adopted black girls. And it's kind of an interesting thing to watch how they're dealing with that in California because he is a highway patrolman in California with these daughters. And they get some interesting responses there.
Yeah.
So as we talked about this, she goes, no, we're, we want reform. We want people to understand that there are problems in the system that need to be fixed. That's what we're looking at. We're not trying to bad mouth all police. We recognize everybody has a police officer in the family or that they know. We're not going after them. We're going after the system and the things that are broken. And that actually made total sense to me when we started talking about that and found out we have a lot of common ground and we have a lot of things that. We can all agree on. And not only that, but it was really nice to just sit down and talk about policy. Because one of the things that's getting lost in all of this is how do we fix it? Nobody's talking about policy. And I'm really excited because one of the things we're talking about doing right now is a summit between Black Lives Matter and other groups that are interested. And the police and the system and see what we can do to bring these groups together and actually find some solution. I mean, Utah can lead the way in this because we're good at this kind of thing. We're good at bringing groups together. And we're good at solving problems because we can get people to sit down and talk. And they're interested in doing that. And in Utah, we could lead the way and do just this thing. And I think they're interested, not only interested in it, but it's something that we're in the process of putting together.
So last question, you ready? So campaigning, always a big adventure. Every time people start it, they have no idea what they're doing walking down that road, but. You know, you're getting towards, towards the end, election day is on Tuesday. What's been your, your favorite anecdote, your favorite story, your favorite thing that's happened while running for office?
Wow.
I'm sure you got a good one. Come on.
Gosh, I can think of a few. I think the one thing that I have found in running for office. And you know, I found this because I've run for office more than one time. I run for the Parks and Rec Board, which is an elected position. And in that process, you meet lots of different people. You talk to lots of different people. You get to hear lots of different people's stories. I think what made this year unique is people are more, more interested in telling you their stories. They're more interested in finding out what your story is and why you're involved. But more importantly, they are. They're so polarized in what's going on this year that sometimes. They fail to see you as a human being because you have an R or a D or something else behind your name. And so I have dealt with some really interesting situations, even in school where because I'm running for office and. We don't talk about that in school. Matter of fact, I don't discuss it at all in school. When I'm asked, I always give them the same answer. What do we not discuss in school? Politics. And the reason is, is I teach technical theater. There's no reason to discuss it there unless we're doing a political piece and then that's different, but we're not. And so
Les Mis, no.
Well, if we're doing that, then we could talk about it. But right now, we're
But not modern politics, no.
You know, I had an interesting experience and actually it's not this cycle, but it happened a couple of years back as I was teaching and maybe this is a really good story. I remember because the last presidential election cycle was very, very interesting in the schools. I was teaching junior high at Westlake Junior High at the time. And I remember a student coming in the, it was two days after the election. And I will just tell you, the day after the election was a horrible day for teachers and students. Because man, tensions were high. You could tell people were upset and it was not a good school day.
Yeah.
But I had a student come into my class and he was angry. And he was angry at everybody that he thought voted for the opposing party of what he thought he supported. And he came in and the first thing he said to me was, I hate you. I don't like you because I know you voted for the person I didn't agree with. And I looked at him and I said, you don't know who I voted for. And he went on and on and it started to escalate in class. And finally I stopped and I said, can I ask you a question? And he said, fine, what? And I said, why do you think you know how I voted? And his comment to me was, well, I just know. I said, how? How do you know how I voted? And he goes, well, I mean, it's, you, you just, you look like a person that would vote like that. And I said, really? Is it because of how I look that you're judging me on how you think I would have voted? And everybody kind of stopped for a second and looked at him and he goes, well, I guess, yeah. I said, so wait, so you're judging me on exactly how I look when I'm in your class? Now, mind you, I recognize I'm a white blonde woman in a class that is about eighty percent Latino at that point with other nationalities mixed in. And they all stopped and kind of looked at him for a second. And I said, so. You're making an assumption on my looks that I voted a certain way or that I think a certain way. That actually isn't fair. And that is kind of the definition of racism, isn't it? And they all looked at each other and they just stopped for a second. And he looked shocked. He goes, well, that's not what I meant. I mean, that's, I'm like, but isn't that what that is? You're judging somebody by the way they look. That's the problem we have. It goes all different directions. And you know what? We have this problem in America right now. We're so quick to judge people about how we look instead of what we say and what we do. People look at what we do and how we do things. They wouldn't be judge us by an R or a D behind our name. They wouldn't judge us by what we might. They might think we're going to do. They would judge us by what we have done in the past. And they would judge us by the things that we've been involved in. And if we judge people that way, it would be a much better world that we live in. And that's what we're finding this year is it's, we, we've become so decisive. We're judging people by labels.
But it's lazy thinking, you know, I had a, I had someone, you know, I send out these text messages for candidates and then I reply back because it's, it's peer-to-peer. It's interactive, you know? And this kid said, oh, I'm 25 years old. My generation's, you know, we're too smart to vote for, for this kind of candidate or that kind of candidate. And, and I said, oh, I hope you're, you're smart enough to do some research, to make a decision based on, on knowledge, not just a quick judgment. And of course he wrote back with an explicitive, explicative, but. I was, I was trying to be like, well, you know, do some homework. That's how you can be smart. It's, it's not about. Oh, I've been educated based on seeing these things and you old people are dumb. It was. Do some homework. I mean, if you decide to stay in the direction you're in, great, but you know, at least Google, you know?
And there's a lot of information out there and all the different candidates. And if you want to know, most of them will answer a phone call, will answer a text message, will answer. An email. I've been answering emails the whole campaign and people seem surprised that I'm personally answering those. So.
Oh, I, I think it's great to text back and forth to people because I mean, some people, they have just genuine questions about this candidate or what they believe in this or that. One person was really upset about the Cafe Rio gift card issue. And really wants us to pursue, and I thought that was great. Apparently if you buy a Cafe Rio gift card, you can't. Use it online to order your, like your food online and pick it up. And during COVID, everybody likes to do that, right? And so like they, they wanted me to, to bring that up with, with the powers that be and maybe we will. How do I use my Cafe Rio gift card without going inside the building and getting COVID? I thought that was totally legit. I love that issue.
Well, and oftentimes those are the issues you hear. People have small
Love it.
They face it, you know?
Yeah, so. All right, where else should we go?
Well, just, it's been a real pleasure talking to you. You have seven days until the election. So I want to give you an opportunity, just kind of your, your, your last appeal. What would you like people to remember most about the discussion we've had? And when they see your name on the ballot, what should they be thinking about?
When it comes right down to this election cycle, I think the most important thing that we have going on right now. Is the future of how Salt Lake County operates. The future of how it's going to affect your everyday life and your quality of living. And my biggest concern right now is we need leadership in Salt Lake County who's going to be fiscally responsible. And that means we've got to look at how we do business. We can't keep doing it the way we've always done it. And Salt Lake County knew that they've had to change for a long time and they're. They found ways over the years not to have to make the changes that they know they need to make. And they are in the process of having to change how they do business because initially they were a county that was. Covering a whole huge area of unincorporated areas. But as those areas have shrunk and the number of people that they actually truly represent have gone down. We are losing the areas that they actually oversee, but they haven't changed how they do business. And that's where we've run into some problems. And that's why our county budget has grown to 1.5 trillion dollars. Or a billion dollars, sorry, not trillion, 1.5 billion dollars. And it's a concern. And when we get right down to bottom brass tax, we haven't planned for the future. We haven't. Put together a coalition of mayors and cities and towns that are here in Salt Lake County. To do some master planning with everybody on board and everybody's input like it needs to happen. And because of that, we are running into problems. We also haven't been managing grant funding and things in a, in a completely fair way. And so some of those practices need to be relooked at. It needs to be fair for all cities, all areas of Salt Lake County, and the money needs to be distributed amongst those appropriately. And there is a lot of people who feel like that isn't happening. And on the west side, we need more voice. We realize that and it's a problem we've had all the way along, which is why we got involved in changing the form of county government from three county commission. To a mayor council form of government. So the west side would have a say. Everybody needs to say in Salt Lake County and we need a mayor who's going to listen to us at the same time. I'm there to fight for people's right to be able to be heard all over the county, not just in one area. And I'm also there to help fight for fiscal responsibility, for responsible growth and for transparency. Our, you know, all of our meetings need to be at a time when people don't have to take time off from work and be able to attend the meetings if they so, are so inclined to do that. So those are some of the things that we really need to start focusing and fighting. And the last thing we need to do is we need to be focusing on recovery from COVID. How are we going to keep ourselves safe? How are we going to keep our families safe? What are we going to do about mental health? And how can we best protect our families with mental health? And then the last thing and the most important thing, how are we going to stay open and stay open safely? That's what the county should be telling us. And I would just ask for your vote.
All right. I just want to take a quick moment and thank Abby Evans and also Lori Stringham for joining us on the podcast today. Remember you only have about seven days left before your vote needs to be cast. I recommend if you're doing mail-in and most of us are. That you get that done as soon as possible. So maybe on election day, we can have an actual result. Thank you for joining us and I look forward to speaking to you next time on Informed Utah.